We call this meeting to order. The invocation today is going to be given by David Clayder from Apostolic Tabernacle of Wilmington.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you humble and submitted unto you. God, we're grateful that you have blessed us to be born in such a free and prosperous land. We pray here today that through your spirit you would grant guidance and wisdom to all of our elected officials. May all business conducted here today be pleasing and acceptable in your sight. We pray that our elected officials focus wholly on the betterment of our community, being mindful of all of its citizens, from the greatest to the least. In all things, we pray that you would receive all glory and honor and would have the preeminence. This is our prayer, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Everybody face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united god, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
There's a motion. My last even second there.
All in favor? Aye. At this time, it's my pleasure to thank one of our commissioners. I've probably learned, I've learned more from him than anybody so far, because he's been around for awhile. And he's been there and done that, and I appreciate you. Just want you to know that. And on top of that, we wanted to give you this, Jonathan. An appreciation of honor and recognition of exemplary service to the citizens of New Hanover County as a New Hanover County Commissioner, December the first, 2008; December the second, 2024. Serving as Chair, December the sixth, 2010; December the fifth, 2011; October the first, 2012; December the third, 2012; December the twenty-second, 2014; to December the fourteenth, 2015; December the third, 2018; to December the second, 2019. Serving as Vice Chair, December the seventh, 2009; to December the sixth, 2010; December the fifth, 2011; to October the first, 2012; December the fourteenth, 2015; to December the nineteenth, 2016. Congratulations, Jonathan.
Good afternoon, all. I knew that this day would come one day, as the Lord has seasons for us all. And for me, it's important to walk out the faith that I have and recognize those seasons. It was sixteen years ago that my wife and my three daughters and my father and mom stood up here with me as I took my first oath of office. But this business was nothing new to me as I watched my father Jonathan Barfield Sr. serve as the county commissioner here, getting elected in 1980. One of the proudest moments of my life is walking into this building from the front and seeing his name on the placard as Chair of the Board of Commissioners when they renovated this building. And I often try to bring honor to my father since 1898. And the significance is that since that time period, there'd only been two people that looked like me serving in this office. It has truly been an honor and a pleasure for me to serve the citizens of our county for the past sixteen years. But when I speak about seasons, I recognize that, as the Lord told me, this part of your season is done, I've got new work for you to do. And all I can do in my walk is trust God. I can't just say those words without walking them out and trusting God every step of the way. When one door closes, he always has other doors open. I spent a day up in Raleigh, serving on Governor-elect Stein's transition team, helping him map out some things. And seeing opportunities and doors open lets me know that I'm not in charge of anything. But I met some really neat people along the way. My first mentor in this role was Bruce Shale. When I first got elected, I watched staff, they would always open the doors for commissioners and put commissioners, in my opinion, on the pedestal that they should be on. And I said, "Let me open the doors for you." So I asked Bruce, I said, "Bruce, what I need from you?" And I had the same talk with Chris. I want to have Bruce and Chris and Jonathan conversations, not commissioner and manager conversations. Let me know when I'm in the right place, let me know when I'm in the wrong place. There were times when I sat in Bruce Shale's office and I had the biggest butterflies, and he said, "JB, you zig where you should've zagged." And I realized that as an elected official, as a leader, you need folks that will keep it real with you, that will tell you the truth, no matter what that looks like to you, so that you can always be covered as opposed to uncovered. And those are some of the most valiant conversations. And with those talks, whatever Chris had to say, push back as much as you want to, I appreciated that. There was nothing held against Chris for what he had to say, because I needed to know the truth. To the citizens of our community, I would like to think that I'm leaving this place better than when I found it. One of my greatest moments in serving on the board was in 2011 as Chair, leading our county in its first strat plan in almost twenty years, recognizing that the county had no strategic plan or planning document or vision document in place. And I'm thinking, "How do you run a county government without a vision and a plan?" We hired a consultant from Texas, came in and worked with every department, and now when you walk throughout our county offices, you see strategy maps. But those started back in 2011 with a young guy who saw the vision to have this county have a strat plan. When I drive through our community now, I see things that I voted on, projects that I voted on, and I can be proud of those things, recognizing that our community has grown in ways that I could never have imagined. So it's been an honor for me and my family to serve our community, but I will tell you this, I'm not done. I'm too young, I have too much knowledge and wisdom, too much institutional knowledge to sit on the shelf. There are other public offices that I've been thinking about and looking at, and I find that, just like Jonah, when the Lord said, "Go and do this," and he was hesitant, he'll find ways to put you where he wants you to be. I don't want to be in the belly of a fish, but I definitely want to serve our community. To Rob Zapple, to Dane Scalise, to Bill Robinbark, to LeAnn Pierce, to Commissioner-elect Stephanie Walker, may God's blessings be upon you. May you lead your office with dignity and integrity, always keeping the people first at all times. And recognize that it's an honor to serve as a county commissioner. It's an honor to be a public servant, period. But we have one of the greatest communities in our state, a great place that I call home. Godspeed to you all. Blessings.
Okay. At this time, we'll do the administration of oath of office.
and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as county commissioner of New Hanover County, so help you God? If this is your solemn oath, please say, "I will."
I will.
All right, I see we're going to have some support in maintaining this oath. Do you, Dane Scalise, solemnly swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the office as county commissioner of New Hanover County, so help you God?
Yes, sir, I will.
Congratulations.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to make some very brief remarks, I hope you won't mind. I want to begin by thanking Chief Judge Myers. Chief Judge Myers is the chief judge of the Eastern District of North Carolina. He's been serving in this capacity for a number of years. He also was one of my law school professors. Very proud to have him administer the oath for me today. I'm happy to report that I got an A minus in his class. Pretty good. Real quick backstory on how someone becomes Rich Myers, Judge Rich Myers. Genius for any number of reasons that you could say. Served as a newspaperman, went off to law school, got top grades, went and became a federal prosecutor, went and became a professor, later a federal district court judge. These are all very high honors and accolades, and it's because he did exceptionally well in law school. I did more average in law school, and for that reason, you see that I'm not a federal district court judge, but rather county commissioner, which is still pretty good, right? Thank you very much, sir, for your honoring me today with this oath. I want to thank the people that I have standing here with me today, my wife Katia, my son Boris, my son Louis, my dad David, my mom Kimberly, my brother Evan, my best friend David Gross, his wife Lauren. It is an honor for me to be here, and I want to thank the people that are here in this room to be with us here today. And I also want to thank the voters of New Hanover County for putting your trust in me for the service that I'm going to provide over these next four years. I want to end by thanking Commissioner Barfield, who I've sat beside for the last eighteen months. Commissioner Barfield, thank you very much for the friendship that we've cultivated over these eighteen months together, for the advice that you've given me over these eighteen months. I hope that we will continue on in that fashion in the future. I know that we will. To incoming Commissioner Stephanie Walker, congratulations to you. I look forward to sitting beside you presumably in the years to come. Thank you very much, everybody.
Good luck. Yes, ma'am. Absolutely. That's what is deserved.
She's going to be on that side because your left hand is on that side. Do you, Stephanie A.C. Walker, solemnly swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as county commissioner of New Hanover County, so help you God?
I will. Thank you.
We're going to take about a five-minute break, so everybody can shake hands with whoever they want to shake hands with.
Okay, everybody, we're getting ready to get cranked back up. Okay, the next business is the election of Chair and Vice Chair. Jordan K. Smith, County Attorney, is presiding.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. By statute, you're required to select your Chair and Vice Chair for the upcoming year at today's meeting, and by your rules of procedure and your typical custom, the County Attorney presides over that process. Happy to do so again today. First, we'll have nominations and elections for the position of Chair, and then follow that same process for Vice Chair. And if there's not any questions, I will open the floor for nominations for the position of Chair.
It is my distinct pleasure and honor to nominate William E. Robenbark, Chair.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations to Chair Robenbark. Moving on to Vice Chair, I will open the floor up for nominations for Vice Chair.
It is similarly my distinct honor and pleasure to nominate Leanne Pierce, Vice Chair.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Chair, first off, congratulations on your election.
Thank you, sir.
And... Item number two and item number three. If... We just need some clarification on this. Is Joe here by any chance?
He was here.
Yeah, I thought I saw him too, but I don't see him now.
No.
Is... Melissa, is he still here?
Commissioners, I do not believe Joe is here. I certainly can do my best to answer your questions, or Jessica.
Uh, I'm good with number three. If I just have a quick clarification or comment on number two. I'll speak to Joe later.
Commissioners Apple.
And with that, I'd move that we approve items one and three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
On number two, this seems to be almost a yearly thing. The... This has to do with the adoption of public officials' bond resolutions. And I... I'll just ask again, and to put our Sheriff's Department strikes me as very, very low, to the point of being inconsequential. I know, I recognize that we're following a state statute on that that requires a minimum. If we're going to do it, why don't we put it to where it appropriately should be? And I'll leave that up to the, you know, legal minds here, or the risk management side. But a $25,000 bond for our Sheriff's Office does very little. Any comment on that, Carrot? Good to see you.
Good to see you, sir. Good to see you, Commissioners Apple. We've run it past Jennifer Stansel with our Risk Management Team. She's in compliance with the state mandatories, and that's where it has sat for quite a while. So we're continuing with that precedent.
Do we have an additional insurance bond with the Sheriff's Department in case there is a problem?
I'll be happy to answer that question. We do not have an additional insurance bond. There is additional insurance coverage for the Sheriff's Office, and the limits are much higher than $25,000.
Is there any reason why we wouldn't want to combine the two?
So the bond is a separate document. It has different avenue for someone seeking redress against the Sheriff's Office.
Right.
So it's a different document. The insurance coverage is with much higher amounts of coverage is most likely what an interested party is going to to go after.
You know, respectfully, $25,000 doesn't even get you the services of a lawyer to sue the Sheriff's Department. I just think that, I'll just call it government efficiency, that we could meet the state requirement and get a realistic number in there. That would then also send the message to the public, Sheriff's Department is covered.
How long has it been, $25,000?
In speaking with Ms. Stansel, that's been the minimum that she's been doing. I don't have a year time. It's just been the way that it's been presented for quite some time.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
It seems to me that this list is an actual person, Officer, Sheriff, or just tactical. It's not the whole Sheriff's Department.
It is for the Sheriff, and technically, everybody serving under the Sheriff is stepping in his shoes. Technically, matter against any deputy is against the Sheriff, the elected Sheriff, as the office holder.
If I might interject, it seems that we have some legitimate questions. I don't disagree with you at all, but if we don't have the answers today, can we charge our staff with finding some answers to these questions and bringing it back to us so that we can find out why it's set at this level, and whether or not it can be modified?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Commissioner Scalise. This has been, I believe, the 10th year that I've brought this issue up. So I'm sorry that I have two people who have not heard it before to this point here. So I recognize it'll be a very heavy lift, but it just strikes me, I think that any common sense person who looks at this could, has the same reaction I have.
I agree with you completely.
Thank you very much. And with that, I'll move to pass number two as well on our consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Last one is Strategy Report from Jennifer Rigby.
Well, good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to provide you with the first report out for your strategic plan for fiscal year '24 through '28. This is your third strategic plan, and over the past 12 years, you've achieved significant success for this community through your thoughtful, visionary, and strategic leadership. In addition to this plan providing guidance for the nearly 2,200 dedicated public servants at New Hanover County, this plan also provides guidance to the many community partners that you provide funding to, as well as to the New Hanover County Endowment, which through its chartering documents is charged with following and supporting the county's strategic plan. These are important points to make because the vision and goals that you have identified in your strategic plan are bold, and they have far-reaching impacts for our community. In the spring of 2023, with significant input from residents, community partners, and subject matter experts, you identified three primary focus areas: workforce and economic development, community safety and well-being, sustainable land use, and environmental stewardship. In each of these focus areas, you identified desired outcomes, strategic objectives, performance measures, and targets for success. So today, I'll walk you through each of these focus areas, your desired outcomes, and a pulse check for how we are measuring up towards reaching our stated targets. So our first focus area, workforce and economic development, you have articulated three desired outcomes and associated targets. The first is that residents are provided equitable opportunities to connect to education and highly skilled employment by developing a Cradle-to-Career pipeline to ensure lifelong learning and employment success. For this outcome, we are measuring our unemployment rate and wage growth as compared to the state, both of which are achieving these targets. In fiscal year 2023, unemployment rates were 3.5% and 3.1% for the state and New Hanover County respectively. And while our wage growth is still below the state average, we are trending in a positive direction and beginning to close the gap from over 2% below the state average in 2022 to 1.6% above the state average in 2023. Your second desired outcome is a business-friendly environment that promotes growth, agility, and collaboration by planning for the long-term needs of businesses through timely, innovative programs and community partnerships. For this outcome, we're measuring new business growth and the county's sales tax growth as it relates to the state. Both of these measures are areas of opportunity for us. New Hanover County business growth is hovering at just below 7%, while the state growth is just over 12%. Our sales tax data has been underperforming, which has been monitored and communicated to you regularly by Eric Cradle. The third desired outcome for this focus area is resilient infrastructure drives economic growth and opportunities by leading the area in well-planned infrastructure creation and resources. You're measuring this through achieving a positive return on investments for projects within 15 years of completion and by the county's GDP per capita growth as it's related to the state. You have made significant investments: the Healing Place, the Government Center, Hanover Pines, just to name a few. And as you can see, the tax base is growing in the areas you have made these strategic investments, and we anticipate that to continue to grow over the course of the plan. Additionally, you will see that New Hanover County's GDP growth is 0.64% above the state's growth. For your second focus area, that you have also identified three desired outcomes, and the first is that every resident has access to services that support their physical and mental well-being by connecting residents to services at the right time with a variety of service providers. We're measuring this by reducing the top three causes of premature death in New Hanover County, which are cancer, heart disease, and accidents. We're currently on track for reducing heart disease and accidents, however, we have seen a rise in premature deaths from cancer. We're also measuring the mental health care provider ratio to residents as a target, and we are trending in a positive direction for this. Our second desired outcome is the community supports a life that mitigates health and safety risk by effectively and efficiently responding to public health and safety demands. We're measuring this by the percentage of urgent 911 calls dispatched within 90 seconds or less, which is an area of opportunity for us. We are seeing an increase in the volume of life-threatening calls requiring law enforcement dispatch. This requires multiple units and, in many cases, multiple agencies to respond and be first on the scene, which is contributing to longer dispatch times. This is different from fire and EMS, which could do, which do not require multiple units to be on the scene first and can be dispatched in a shorter time period. It's important to note that our 911 telecommunications are on the line the entire time, offering lifesaving information. And for this outcome, we are also measuring the percent of fire rescue responses arriving within official emergency benchmarks. And over the past year, we saw a 25% improvement in turnout times. Our final objective in this focus area is that residents feel supported and connected to their community by building relationships and creating opportunities that enhance engagement for a diverse community. And through our Good Governance survey, and this is similar to a customer satisfaction survey, we're seeing more than 73% of residents responding favorable in this area. Our third focus area, sustainable land use and environmental stewardship, we again have three desired outcomes, and the first desired outcome in this focus area is through planned growth and development, residents have access to their basic needs by connecting residents to their needs through a variety of housing and transportation options. This is measured by drive times as well as housing supply. So as you can tell, 95% of our residential units in the unincorporated area are within a 10-minute drive of healthcare, childcare, grocery stores, and pharmacies. However, you can see that our housing stock is not keeping pace with our population growth. The second desired outcome is natural areas and critical environmental features are enhanced and protected by ensuring development complements natural features. Our targets are to reduce the number of new residential lots created in special flood hazard areas within the unincorporated county, and reduce bacterial contaminants in our county creeks. Both of these targets are trending up, so we will want to continue to monitor these targets. The third outcome is cultural amenities that enhance quality of place or safeguard it by promoting the community through activities that enhance life and connect people. We're measuring this by attendance at our cultural and recreational facilities, and residents reporting their culture is valued at New Hanover County through our Good Governance survey. Both of these measures are trending up, with a 70% increase in attendance at our facilities and 75% of our residents reporting that their culture is valued in New Hanover County. Underpinning the county's community focus areas is good governance, and I often share with our new employees that while the community focus areas are central to the county's vision statement, good governance is how we fulfill our mission and the expectations of all 2,200 New Hanover County employees. This has and continues to be a strength for us. We're charged with providing equitable, effective, and efficient, customer-driven practices, and nearly 88% of respondents on our Good Governance survey indicate they are satisfied with the level of services the county provides, and 91% of residents report they were treated fairly by the New Hanover County team. In terms of aligning services and programs with strategic priorities, 70% of the strategic objectives you have identified are making positive progress. Communicating what the county does and why, over 61% of respondents report they understand the decisions the county makes. Hiring and retaining people committed to public service, 1.32% of county employees that leave the organization were from high performers and are considered controllable losses, and five out of seven demographic populations are meeting the stated goal of being within 5% of the county demographic composition. To ensure that we are building the capacity for data-driven decision-making, we do have an opportunity to improve the number of department-level KPIs, and those are key performance indicators, to achieve their set goals. We're currently at 63%, and our goal is 90%. 75% of employees are reporting they receive continuous education, training, related to their job, and our goal is 80%. And in terms of reducing our carbon footprint, we're seeing positive growth for our facilities and our fleet as well as an increase in the SmartSaver program, which is reducing our demand and consumption. So on the screen, you will see a QR code and a link for the Good Governance survey. This is posted at our customer-facing counters online and broadcast through social media, and this is an important source that our team uses to understand how our customers are experiencing the services we offer. As you can tell, a significant amount of work has been accomplished in the first year of your strategic plan. There's still opportunity to improve and grow in the life of the plan. The purpose of this report is to provide you with a high-level overview of your progress towards accomplishing the goals you have established, and our goal is for this to be useful to you as you plan and prepare, make decisions, and allocate resources in the upcoming year. I'd like to share that this is the work of a number of individuals, 2,200 New Hanover County employees across the organization, and I'm particularly grateful for the strategy team for collecting and analyzing this data. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Jennifer. That strategy team led by Ms. Rigby? Thank you very much. You've done wonderful work, as always, in putting it in, you know, the information in a totally understandable format. I really thank you a lot. This is our third strategic plan over the past 12 years. How many of them have you been involved with?
All three.
Well done. A lot of work. Just a quick follow-up. I know you mentioned briefly about our, the grocery store on the north side of downtown. Do you have a very quick line, top-line update on where that is? I know we've been talking about it for multiple years now, and love to know when we're gonna break ground and when we'll have a grocery store.
Commissioners Apple, Sarah Wormuth is here, and she, along with Tara Duckworth, are the primary staff leads on that. If one or both of them would come forward and speak to that Tara.
It wouldn't be the Sarah-Tara team without Tara, right?
It wouldn't be Sterra if they didn't come together.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. So we are currently under design with our architect, and we are projecting that that design will be complete here as we round the end of the calendar year. So we still are on schedule first quarter of next calendar year, and still looking then at about a 12-month construction. That still will be finalized and determined more once we bring the contractor on.
Sarah, do we have a, an engineer or an architect's opinion on the cost, an update on that?
I don't have an update right now, but I expect one this month, the month of December. But everything, as we've been going along, we have been keeping our budget in mind and constantly reiterating that and making decisions with that in mind. But we'll actually get an official cost estimate from the architect before we bid it.
And if anything, everything goes to plan, we'd be breaking ground summer, autumn, 2025?
I would say spring, early summer.
Of 2025?
Correct.
Wow, that'd be great. Thanks, and I apologize for, you know, kind of dropping this on you in the middle of a meeting. But I know there's a lot of people who are very anxious about it. The second one, and I'm sorry, I don't mean focusing on our Sarah-Tara team, but the Star facility over there on Robin Hood Drive. Unfortunately for you, I drive by it every day, actually twice, and I'm just looking so much forward to seeing any kind of sign of demolition, asbestos removal, anything to get that thing off the ground. We desperately need that facility.
Yes, and our contractor there started that about a week ago. So I actually drove by Wednesday before Thanksgiving, and it was very active at that site. So if you drive by now, you will see the demolition has begun. So that is under contract, and I don't have an updated date on that, but I can get that and send you. I don't want to misquote offhand, but our completion date for that.
Great, and we're assuming that budget-wise, it's right in line?
Knock on wood, we are excellent with that.
That's great news. Thank you. So I should see a lot of orange bags being heaved into the dumpster, right?
There are a lot, yes. There's a lot going into the dumpster right now.
Thank you very much for that spontaneous update. That's all the questions I had, Mr. Chair.
Hear anybody else?
Anybody else?
Yeah, I hate to open this can of worms, but talking about demolition, talking about grocery stores, there's some demolition that's going on just a block over from us. There's a proposal for apparently a grocery store through an upset bid process. I'm not asking for any answers tonight, but I sure hope that we are considering the impact of a privately-run grocery store that may in fact be coming into downtown and how that might impact our model, and I'm just gonna stop there. But, I mean, that's a serious consideration that appears to be a fairly new development, and I would be very concerned that we would potentially be simultaneously running in the public sector and in the private sector two similarly competing concepts that might be at odds with one another, and perhaps neither would be successful. Maybe they both would, I don't have an answer to that, but I sure hope that we're thinking about that.
Commissioner Scalise, if it's of any comfort, I've also had very similar thoughts. Where I live over in Pine Valley, I have no less than four grocery stores within a half-mile of our house, and all of them seem to be flourishing. I guess people buy a lot of food. I don't know what else to say, that gives me a little bit of hope, but I understand the foundation of where you're coming from, and I know we'll track that.
Go through. Anybody else? Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Okay, that's the end of the regular meeting, now we have two speakers sign up to speak. First one is Ricky Meeks. Ricky, you have three minutes.
Thank you for the three minutes. My name is Ricky Meeks, live Wilmington for all my life, graduate of U of M High School, class of 1987. Learned at night that the chief of justice from Supreme Court or the district court judge, class of 85. He knew who I was. County Commissioner Sidney Walker and I are high school classmates, she was 89, out of U of M High School, class 87. The wife of the chairman, Tina Rambark, and I are graduate of U of M High School, class 87. The Wildcats, enough said. I'm here to speak about way transit. 2004, the New Hanover County, which is you, and the city Wilmington, which is they over there, merged the transit system in 2004. Way transit is making some changes. I think it's under call for as a great citizen of great people of Wilmington, New Hanover County, and way transit is gonna make some changes, 103, making some change of 103 to 104. 104 serves Gordon Road and Margaret Street. My mother, Lucille, died this coming Thursday, 5th of November, 5th of December in 1980, 19, excuse me, 5th December of 1992, aged 46-years-old. And she's buried in Prospect Cemetery along with my grandmother and my great-grandmother. My great-grandmother was born in the house in 1907, '05 in Southport in Brunswick County, and my grandmother was born 34th, 1929 at James Walker Hospital. Making some change, no more buses to Gordon Road and Margaret Street as of January 2025. No more buses to Rochester Beach in that direction. And also, no more buses go to K-Fair Hospital and go and come down Rochester Avenue. New Hanover County Schools is one of the great school systems in the great state of North Carolina, and I know that because I have ran for school board as a Democrat and a Republican. All the young people love Ricky Meeks at ballgames, and I love them. The teachers and the principals does a fantastic job for our school system. Number two, there's two Hispanic children rides 103 bus to Winter Park Elementary School, which is an open enrollment school. I make some phone calls. I say, "Your school is an open enrollment?" I went, "Huh huh," because I ran for school board. This guy here cares about this great county, and this guy here cares about the city Wilmington. We gotta do something. I do not want to run for public office over there, but I promise you this, I'm gonna run for either city council of Wilmington or the mayor and make this city one of the best places in the state of North Carolina. And I got that from a good governor, James B. Hunt Jr. in 1984.
Ricky, your time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Happy holidays.
Merry Christmas, Ricky.
Next speaker is Claudia Campice.
I think I have to lower this.
If you would, state your name and your address.
I will. Good evening, my name is Claudia Campice, and I live at 94 Tall Oaks Drive in Castle Hain. And I'm here to speak about the proposed Hilton Bluffs development. My husband and I have lived in Castle Hain since 1997. Do any of you live in Castle Hain? No, I thought not. Nobody wants to live there, right, because it's too far away from everything? Too far from town, too far from the beach, too far from shopping? That's why we live there, but all that's about to change with this Hilton Bluffs development. And we fear that this development is gonna cause a lot of traffic and a lot of, a lot of new infrastructure that's needed that we don't have. And I understand this board has no say in the matter, is that normal? When I looked at your website, it seems like any kind of building permit has to go through the board, or your website at least. How did this happen? Was the power taken away from you from this, by this right, by right development? I'll leave that for you all to consider. The area that we're talking about contains over 3,000 acres of wetlands. My family home backs up to this wetland. My family home is on the border of this property at the Prince George Creek side. We see and we hear all of the wildlife on this property. We see great blue heron, turkey, deer, various owls, birds, countless, countless birds, bear, raccoon, possum, all the different grasses that grow there, all the different varieties of flowers. I can't, it's just, it's an amazing place. Andy Wood from the North Carolina Aquarium, from Fort Fisher, explained to us that the sledge forest is an ecosystem, ecosystem that hosts the bass fishing industry, all of the different things that grow there, he explained, and the bass fishing industry is a very lucrative business. Instead of 4,000 homes, what do you think about what it could look like if we had a wildlife preserve there? Everyone could enjoy it, there could be bike paths, running paths. It could be an educational place where kids could come and learn.
Ms. Campice, your time is up, sorry.
I think you got my point, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Just want to make one comment. Just wanted to welcome back John Campbell, our director of our Health Department, who has been off of the, serving in the military reserves for the past seven months, is that right? Yeah, and we, we missed you, although the department's been going well, but we're really delighted to have you back. And I believe today was actually your first day back, so welcome.
Anyone else?
Congratulations, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioner Walker, Commissioner Zapple, we're still on the ends of the dais over here.
All right.
And Mr. Chair, if I might say, I would like to congratulate you guys on your reelection, and congratulations, Commissioner Walker, we're happy to have you as part of our team, looking forward to working with you.
And that's it for this meeting.
I'll just say the same, hold on one second, I just want to say the same. Looking forward to working with all of you, thank you.
Welcome.